Keith Bassler, Jimmy Clayton.
I'm very quiet, aren't I?
Good morning. Just a reminder, turn your cell phones off or put it on vibrate. Thank you very much. Rose, roll call.
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, February 5th, 2014, at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky.
Thank you. Can we rise for silent meditation?
Mr. President asked this morning that we remember all those that are less fortunate than we are in our community. Special thoughts and prayers go out to family in our community that lost a four-year-old child in fire just the other day. And then for all of those, again, that are less fortunate than we are than have lost loved ones in our community. Finally, we ask our God and Creator to give us wisdom, give us the right level of intelligence to make the right decisions and best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion for approval, minutes from 1:15 of 14 and for bills for payment on 2/7/14 and 2/14 of 14. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon.
Request for repository sales. Do we have any? Do we have a request for repository sales? Any requests for repository sales? Hearing none, citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens to be heard? Please give us your name and address.
Morning. My name is Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point, Erie, Pennsylvania. Morning, President, Council, staff, visitors, those with us electronically. Four of the council members should remember the evening of November 5th, 2013, very well. It's election day, and the four of you were elected, and that's very exciting, something you won't forget. What about three weeks before that night? Remember that the NAACP had their meet the candidates at the Jefferson Society, just 25 blocks away? In fact, the next tax-exempt piece of real estate in the city, but you four were there to convince those in attendance to vote for you. You would represent them. One question you were all in agreement to was no to another taxpayer-backed bond for a hotel. All four of you said no, including the fifth person that was there, the Republican that didn't get elected. Let me repeat. The four of you told the public you were against the taxpayer-backed bond for a hotel. That's pretty close to a campaign promise in my book. Kwiatowski, Winarsky, Brennan, and Jones. Sounds like a law firm, doesn't it? Hello? Kwiatowski, Winarsky, Brennan, and Jones, we represent you. You get your chance to represent those who voted for you and keep that campaign promise. County Council meets next Tuesday, February 11th, at 7:00. I look forward to seeing the four of you there. If the three-person balance feels the same, your presence would also be appreciated. The Erie Times did a poll about the bond for the hotel. Ninety-six percent of the votes were against it. There's another poll going on right now, and currently ninety percent of the votes are against county-backed bond. If private money wants to invest and pay property taxes, how much better can it get? The private developer has a track record, pays millions in property taxes currently on land and buildings that house businesses that already bring millions into the area. Private developer has a track record, took Peak and Peak out of bankruptcy and made it the shining jewel it is in just 30 miles away. Got all kinds of visitors from Ohio to go to Peak and Peak, and they stop in Erie and stay. The city needs property tax. No kidding. City needs property tax. If a private developer builds a hotel for 20 million, how much tax is there? Well, there's just over 600,000 split between the city, the school, and the county. That's just if he just builds that hotel. It proposes like 150 million development, which puts up about 5 million in taxes a year. There's a rush to approve this taxpayer-backed bond. I've heard numbers of 35 million, 60 million. Well, that's somewhere between 700,000 and 1.2 million just in fees. You know, the one that the bankers and the attorneys get the fees for doing these bonds. You know, and at 35 million, the interest is about 15 million dollars. So what it really costs this bond is about 50 million dollars, and the city gets no taxes for this development down there. It's understandable how the four of you are on record as being against the county-backed bond. All seven should be in favor of private development. Increase the tax base, it's the only hope. The Sheridan has undercut the local hotel industry by offering $49 rooms. They have no skin in the game. They didn't invest their money to build that Sheridan. They got no skin in the game. They can undercut the local hotelers every day, anytime they want to. Government-backed hotels compete against private industry. If it's such a good idea, why isn't government-backed convenience stores on every corner that we don't have one? Let them compete with the local convenience stores if it's such a good idea. Convention center authority planted a seed. Now let private investors take over and start paying back with their property taxes. Does the average person want another high-rise building straddling the water edge? No, they don't. Feltment on private land against the Bayfront Parkway is appropriate. Erie County Council will not allow the public to have a public hearing. The only place large enough to hold a public hearing about this would be the Erie Insurance Arena. Property tax is the lifeblood of any government. I, for one, want to see the city send out more tax bills. You can go to county council meeting, February 11th, at 7:00. Call by tomorrow when you're on the agenda. If you don't call, you're still allowed to speak. Just show up and you can speak. You get to speak at the beginning, so then you can leave if you have other things you have to do. At the courthouse, go through security, take a left, go to the west wing, turn right, go down the hall, first floor. Has anyone asked where in the state budget the 5 million is over the next five years that we're supposedly going to get for this project? I went through the budget. I can't find 5 million in the state budget for this program down here over the next five years. May I say, why are you so strong against private investment? Because I've worked, next, in June, I've worked 40 years in private industry. Never once had to collect a government check. I was very fortunate. Now, county, city council messed up and didn't let the casino on Hammer Mill property. You ignored that through your inaction or action, whatever. And we don't have the casino on Hammer Mill property. So let's not make the same mistake a second time and ignore this private developer. Thanks for your support. Have a nice afternoon.
Good morning. My name's Mark Dolak. I live at 824 Shenley Drive. And I gotta say, it's a great day in America, and it's an honor to be here to talk in front of you guys. But anyway, the point of this is, is I am getting very tired of pulling the responsibility of people who do not pay their bills, the government bailing out people that just are plain old lazy, and our government got people believing that we have to take care of everybody. We got a garbage problem here. And I know that our government is the great appeasers. They'll, you're doing this right now, but yous all know what yous are going to vote on, and I know my taxes are going up, my water bills are going up. There's ways to stop the problem here. It's called revoke driver's license, boot cars. You do it for parking tickets. You got people running around, they owe so much money on their garbage bills over here. I don't know how it got this far, really don't. I mean, everyone just said, oh, well, we'll, you know, put lean on our property. It doesn't work. Put a lean on a property, this gentleman who passed away in a wheelchair on their building over there owed millions of dollars in taxes. We lost money on him, you know? You gotta start penalizing people. Stop penalizing the people who are paying your taxes, your bills. Boot their cars. Like I said, revoke their driver's license, you know? I am so tired, I am so tired of this, our government, just thinking that we gotta take care of everybody and not hold anyone responsible but the taxpayers. And it's time for you guys to stand up and say, hey, you know what? We gotta do something. And we just can't sit down and just say, hey, I'm gonna throw more, raise your bills. And I know that's gonna happen. In the long run, it's almost useless me being here. And, but I would really just like to voice my opinion of it. I'm proud that I can. And you guys have a great day.
Thank you.
Morning, Council.
Morning.
I feel about the same way that he do. Why should we have to pay somebody else's bill? I don't see why you all voted for that. You're supposed to be up there for the taxpayers. It's plain as the nose on your face that you're not. Up fees, up fees. That's all y'all know is up fees. But y'all supposed to be up there to be a kind of a balance on that. Why do we have to pay for somebody else? I mean, this country pays the bill for everybody. Everybody. We, I don't know. I don't know. You're supposed to be smart peoples up there. Just 'cause the mayor want to up the fee, you go along with it. You all gonna want to be the mayor. I'm sure you want to go further than you are, but, uh, I don't know. I don't see it. You gave him a raise back down the road there. We couldn't afford that, but you passed it anyway. You put too much weight on our backs. You're weighting us down. It looked like we can't do anything about it, but if some of those lazy people would get off of their backside and come on down here, you fill this room up, you would think a different way. Because you have something on your mind. I don't know what you're up there for, myself. I don't know what you're up there for. Nobody is responsible for anything. This is just a way of business. We'll up the taxes. You know, once you put a tax on, you're not gonna take it off. It'll be on. How stupid do you think I am? I can't speak for the other peoples out there. Maybe they can afford it. There are peoples out there that can't afford what they're paying. They're missing this to pay that, robbing Peter to pay Paul. It don't make sense. It don't make sense to you, and you, one of these days, you're gonna see it. Because God is going to hold you responsible. You took that oath. You're supposed to be an independent mind. You don't even have a mind. You got an empty box up there. You're not using it. You're supposed to be an intelligent people up there. Up taxes, up taxes. Somebody else owe, but we got to pay for them. That's just like them foreigners coming in here. We got peoples that don't have nowhere to sleep. Look at that weather out there. Your turn is coming one day. You're not gonna always have all that money you're getting. You're gonna, you're gonna have to sleep outside. I've seen on the news, doctors and lawyers, politicians don't have nowhere to go, sleeping outside. I used to be this, I used to be that. You're not gonna be the big fella you think you are always. The peoples are gonna cross your mind, and it's gonna come back to you. I didn't treat them right. You're not treating us right. You're just not. You might think you are, but you're not. And we're tired of it. And you think we can't do anything about it, but eventually, the peoples are gonna get together and they're gonna do something about it. They're gonna do something about it. 'Cause those oats you take, they mean something. They mean something. There's no joke. You should sit down and talk it over with your family, because one day, God's gonna put a curse on you for the lies you're told. Because you're lying. You're not taking care of the people. The people put you up there. You think that's the easy thing to do? Just get up there. I go tell the peoples this and that. You're telling them what they want to hear, and they vote for you. Don't lie to the peoples, because you're gonna pay for it in the end. I promise you that. Better read your Bible. If you don't have one, you better get one. Because God will intercede in his time. You can believe it if you want to. You don't have to take my word for it. And another thing, I see, uh, you're getting some money to control gangs. You know, you got the, when you're putting, when you're building a building, you start with a foundation. Y'all vote for money for everything and everybody, but you haven't given them sinners no money.
Time's up, Mr. Mack.
Those kids need something.
Bell just went off.
Okay, okay. But you all have time to talk.
Thank you, sir.
I know you don't want to hear what I got to say, but one of these
Time's up, Mr. Mack. No, no, time's up, Mr. Mack. Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Good morning, City Council.
Morning.
My name's Willie McAdory. I stay at 448 East 15th Street. I'm back down here this morning to find out, you know, since no one on council questioned the mayor when he brought his budget down there for this year. I didn't see anything in that way he had anything planned for the inner city. And nobody up there even asked it. And I don't understand that. All the problems that the peoples are having out there, and then nobody asked that question? What plans did he have for the inner city? None. And we were complaining about what the problems going on out there. Ain't nobody having none of them peoples out there, so you always gonna have a problem. What are we doing for the youth this summer? Now, is we gonna wait till May to try to do something? When we had all the year to do something, I've been asking. What are we gonna do for the kids this summer? Are we gonna employ them, any of these kids, anywhere in the city, this summer? We know we find money for everything, for the most important thing. Them peoples out there need some money in their pocket, some kind of way. But we find money for everything else that we need, but we don't find none for the peoples in the community out there. And, uh, I hope City Council remember what I told them about. You know, we ain't seen nothing yet. We gonna go in the house one day and there's eight or nine bodies laying up in there. Almost happened, but thank God it didn't. But he made them six ladies get buck naked and them three guys get naked. You understand what I'm saying? The one guy got shocked. I mean, you know, all these kind of things coming, but it's coming. And we ain't doing nothing to try to prevent it. You know, we was at a meeting last week, and the people, and the kids that were saying, well, we ain't seen nobody from the city. What can we tell them? You're right. They do not care about what happens to you out there. They don't care. Apparently, peoples up there don't care. You don't talk about these peoples in the neighborhood out there and the things that they are going through. As soon as we have a problem, well, why they do that? What do you mean, why they do that? Why the kids do this? Evidently, they do it for the simple reason, and it ain't your fault. It's their fault. For the simple reason, the kids haven't been taught. How you expect them to do something that they've never been able, never, never was taught to do? To do anything in life, you got to be taught to do that. And if you don't have nobody in your life from day one until the time you get to the age of about 17, 18, what can they tell you now? Use a loose cannon running around. They're doing everything that they think that's right, because they don't know no better. And that's no excuse for the behavior, but it's there. There's no excuse for their behavior, but it's there. So what we gonna do? We can't lock up everybody now. We cannot lock up everybody. And that's the only intention that, you know, the city government have. They mess up, lock them up. That's their solution to everything. That ain't no solution to the problem. Everybody's not jail material. You know, and you wonder why, well, why they got a gun? The good kid that's being bullied going to school, sooner or later, he gonna get tired. Then he gonna get a gun. Then what we gonna do? Good kid, but now he got a gun. He stopped this dude from bullying him. Now what we gonna do with him? Gonna lock him up. Because we did nothing to protect him. And everybody gonna protect themselves. Believe me, they are. Man, we gotta start thinking about what's going on out there for the people. And, you know, like Mr. Mack said, that was your job coming in here to look out for the citizen. Your job wasn't coming in here to look out for the mayor. When are the citizens gonna start looking out for the citizens? And it's not happening.
Time's up, Mr. McAdory.
I didn't hear the buzzer. Thank you.
I didn't think you did. I know you. Thank you, sir. Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Good morning, everybody. My name's Darryl Fisher. Live in Little Italy, 611 West 16th. Concerning the bayfront, I'm older than some of you and younger than most of you, maybe. I don't know. But I remember as a kid, pre-teen, going from the public dock to the peninsula, and I could walk just about everywhere at the bayfront. And I finally remember a great deal of good times at Shanty Town, Goose Woods, Chestnut Pool, foot of Sasafra sledding, and Jim City, you know, the boat lunches were public, and you had access to everything just about as a kid. You know, it kept us out of trouble, gave us something to do. If we weren't fishing, we were catching frogs or turtles or swimming, whatever, something. And, um, I'm 56 now. I've got six grandchildren. And so many times I take them out, and I want to take them down to the bayfront to enjoy the water and the view, and there's really nowhere to go without walking a half a mile one way or a quarter mile. You got Liberty Park, which is congested in the summertime. You got the public dock. There's nowhere to park, because there's so much going on down there. And, um, I don't know, I don't believe I'm qualified to make the decision who should build a hotel, but if someone's gonna do it, I certainly don't want to foot the bill. But I do believe that some consideration for the properties that still exist, they're undeveloped, should provide for more public access for parents, grandparents, their family, children, couples, whatever, to spend some quiet time, maybe fish a little, or just watch the sunset. And the kids could go down there, maybe, maybe you could have a little playground. I'm a construction worker, and I sit on various committees, and I could gather people together to provide the labor. I'm sure of it. Considering this, uh, tax bills behind the garbage and whatever have you, I'm not up on the inspections for people that are in possession of rental properties, but I believe there's an inspection that's required. I don't know how well that's enforced. But if it were an annual thing, it could be included in the inspection that possibly you wouldn't get approved to rent your properties without your bills being caught up. That's all I really have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none. Rose?
Mr. President.
Mr. Jones?
Before we move into the rest of our agenda, I did, I wasn't sure if they were gonna make it or not with the weather. We do have some students from one of our community schools, Community Country Day School, and their music teacher, Mr. Jones, who happens to be a close relative, the third of 14 of my brothers and sisters, they put together a jingle there and a national competition to, and they're representing Erie. And they're here today to kind of talk about that for a few moments and just talk about what the children are doing, what they've been doing around. We're talking about our young people all of the time, but this is something positive that some of our kids are doing.
Would you have them come up, please?
In the community. Yes, sir. We'll have Mike, called Mr. Jones, come up, and you can bring the kids with you. Again, these are students from the Community Country Day School. And Mike, you can just tell a little bit more about the competition and how people can be involved in that and, and vote for. Let's come on up on stage. Come on, why don't you come on up on the stage, and I'll grab the mic for you. All right, so I'll let you talk here, and you can introduce the kids, and you know, kind of
Okay, okay. Good morning, Council.
Morning.
It's good to be here. Good to see everybody. My name is Mike Jones. And like my brother said, I'm from Erie Community Country Day School. And these are some of the students. And a little bit about what we did is we created a beat in class. We took, we took time and we put all this, all this music together, and we write songs all the times. What happened is the director, Angie Collins, her and my wife saw a ad saying, hey, we're Safe Autos doing a jingle contest, and they know that we work so good together, me and the kids, or the kids and I. And so they said, hey, Mike, why don't you write a jingle? And I said, ah, I really don't want to write a jingle. So they said, well, just, just do it. Let's see, let's see how it turns out. So we end up, we go in, in the classroom, we, we create this beat. I ended up writing a jingle to it, and I upload. I really didn't want to do it. I did it on the last day. And so it got accepted, and I was like, oh, okay, all right, that's good. And so once it got accepted, the first time I looked on it, I was 75th in the country. And so I was like, oh, they must really, really like it. And so I was excited about that. And then the community and the kids, they just really, really got behind it. And right now, currently, I'm sixth in the nation right now. So I'm really excited, really excited about that. Thank you. And I was talking to, I was talking to the, to the kids and the director and to my brother, and I told him, I said, you know what? It's bigger than me. It's bigger than me. It's, it's, it's about the community. It's about, you know, I hear a lot of things about, about Erie, but there is some good, positive things happening in Erie, some good things. There's some good people in Erie doing some great and some phenomenal things. And, and this is, these kids right here are a representation of what can happen if you put your mind to it. They came together and they created a beat, and, you know, their music is being heard across the world right now, across the world. I'm getting people on my Facebook page saying, hey, we didn't even know there was an Erie. But Erie, Erie is being recognized right now, and I'm just excited. I'm excited to be here. I'm excited about, you know, the kids' music being out. And so I'm gonna have Aaron. He's gonna, he's gonna talk to you all real quick. And so I'm gonna have Aaron, he's gonna, he's gonna talk to you all real quick.
I think the jingle helps Erie and the community and the school. And if five people voted five hundred, I meant, five hundred people voted five times a day, we would get a lot of votes.
He said, five hundred people voted five times a day? Okay, so we'll talk, we'll get a lot of votes. So let me, let me, let me, let me tell you how to vote. What you do is you go on the internet, and you go to dothejingle.com. That's dothejingle.com. And then there will be a little search button right there. Just type in Erie. Just type in Erie, and my name will pop up. You pop in my name, and then there is a little green button that says Vote. Click that, and then they're gonna ask you to put in some numbers or some letters. You put that in, and then you hit Submit. Now, the wonderful thing about it is you can keep on voting. You can vote, I think I've voted for myself like, like five hundred times. So you can keep on voting. And so what we want, we want Erie to just get behind us and just help us just push it and just push it and just push it. Because, like I said, this is about our children. I heard Mr. McAdory saying something about our children. This is about our children. And our children, you know, are doing positive things. So let's support the positive things that's going on in the community. And I just want to thank you all just for giving us the time slot just to come and just share with you guys. So thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, thank you. You can put that in there. So why don't you just introduce the kids, give the kids names real quick, and then we'll have each of the children come around, greet the controller and council.
Okay, okay. This is what I'll do. I'll, I'll give them the mic. They'll give you their first, their names, and I don't, because I don't want to mess up their last names. All right, so.
My name's A.J. Phillips.
Aaron Collins.
Elijah Spear.
Tiana Ritchie.
Don't say my last name.
No.
Her name is Nealeek. You want, you want me to do a jingle? Okay, I think that's only right. Okay. On demand, all right.
They were requested to do the jingle by Councilman Winarski. And I don't know if he's gonna sing along with you, but no, don't do that, don't do that.
Ready, guys? Ready? One, two, three. One eight hundred, Safe Auto, legal for less, yes, that's our motto. Don't even stress if you're getting to a problem, because you're with us and I wake up in the morning, no hesitation, take the kids to school, that's my destination. I get hit on the right-hand side, but ain't nobody hurt, just my little pride. I'm just glad it's not a total loss, just one thing to do, and that's to make that call. One eight hundred, Safe Auto, legal for less, yes, that's our motto. Don't even stress if you're getting to a problem, because you're with us and we're gonna solve them. Safe Auto.
Thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate. Young man. That's a good-looking young man right there. You look good. Again, thank Mr. Jones and another Mr. Jones in the back who drove the children down in this little treacherous weather from, excuse me, Old Zook Road there. So thank you, kids. You know, love y'all, you know that very much. So be safe, go ahead and get back to school, get some schoolwork done. And thanks again for coming down. Give our best to the administration at the school as well for letting the kids come down. All right, thank you, Mr. President, for that time.
Very good. Thank you very much again, Mr. Mike Jones, and keep working with the young folks. That's what it's all about. Okay, Rose, we can continue.
Ordinances for final passage and ordinance amending the codified ordinance of the city of Erie, Part Nine, Utilities and Public Service Code, Title VII, Other Public Services, Article 951 Residential Refuse, Section 951.09 Garbage and Refuse Collection Fees, by increasing the yearly fee for collections of garbage and refuse from $192 per year to $220 per year, and by adding Section 951.091 Fee Increase Termination, providing for termination of those fee increases for the 2014 budget year unless extended by City Council. Introduced by Mr. Jones and seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, that council file ordinance Bill Number 15858, and now known as official file ordinance Number 5-2014, be finally passed by the City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Harancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Next is an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Erie, Part Nine, Streets, Utilities and Public Services Code, Title V Sewers and Water, Article 933 Sewer Rental, Section 933.02A Sewer Rates, by increasing the sewer rate service charge from $12 per bill to $17.45 per bill, and meter quantity charge per 100 cubic feet per quarter for the first 70 cubic feet from $2.20 to $2.65, and the next 4,930 cubic feet from $2.10 to $2.52, and all usage over 5,000 cubic feet from $2 to $2.38, and by increasing large volume user charges per 100 cubic feet per month for the first 23 cubic feet from $1.65 to $2.65, and the next 1,644 cubic feet from $1.40 to $2.52, and all other usage over 1,667 from $1.20 to $2.38, and enacting Section 933.021 Rate Increase Termination, providing that those rate increases in effect in the 2014 budget year shall expire at the end of 2014 unless otherwise extended by City Council. Introduced by Mr. Mersky and seconded by Mr. Brennan, that council file ordinance Bill Number 15859, and now known as official file ordinance Number 6-2014, be finally passed by the City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Harancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. An ordinance amending Part One of the codified ordinances, Article 145 Officer and Employees' Retirement System, by adding a new section, 145.07G Deferred Retirement Option Plan for All Participants. Introduced by Mr. Kwiatowski and seconded by Mr. Mersky, that council file Number 15860, and now known as official file ordinance Number 7-2014, be finally passed by the City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Harancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. An ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinance of Erie, Pennsylvania. Introduced by Mr. Witherspoon and seconded by Mr. Winarski, the council file ordinance Bill Number 15864, and now known as official file ordinance Number 8-2014, be finally passed by the City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Harancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Withers, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. Now we have several ordinances for first reading. An ordinance amending official ordinance Number 80-20,005, known as the zoning ordinance of the city of Erie, by changing the classification of the property located at 2021 and 2047 East 38th Street, Erie, Pennsylvania, from R1 Low Density Residential District to that of C1 Local Commercial District, per the request of Attorney Richard Vendetti. Introduced by Mr. Witherspoon and seconded by Mr. Mersky, that council file ordinance Number 15862, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Harancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. An ordinance amending official ordinance known as the zoning ordinance of the city of Erie by changing the classification of the property located at 356 West Sixth Street from RLB Residential Limited Business to C1 Local Commercial District, per request of Caleb Piper, Executive Director of the Erie Historical Society. This will contain an additional six slots at 333, 337, 341, 345, 349, and 353 West Fifth Street, from R3 High Density Residential to that of C1 Local Commercial District.
Mr. President?
Yes.
To make a, propose a, make a motion to make an amendment to this proposed ordinance? I think during that public hearing, we had the Planning Commission made a recommendation. I'd like to go with the recommendation. And Historical Society also did say they were okay with the change. But the proposed ordinance change would be to keep the 356 West Sixth Street property remain at RLB, not C1 as requested, and then the other West Fifth Street properties, 333, 355, from R3 to RLB, and not C1 as requested.
Is anyone here from that department? Anyone recall?
Mr. President, if I could, I recall that I, when we had the Planning Commission here, they had made that recommendation and that the Historical Society was understanding of the rationale behind the request for the RLB. There would, there probably would be dimensional variance need to be applied for with the zoning hearing board in order to achieve their development there, but they felt that that was more applicable. The C1 uses allowed things like banks, beer distributors, cleaners, restaurants, retail, you know, multifamily, you know, a few things that we probably didn't want to consider in the C1 district, although RLB would serve their purposes in terms of expansion of the museum properties. And I, I think that at the last meeting, we had a legal solicitor here, and I think they had said they would be okay for us to make this change. Mr. Carley, do you recommend?
I'm unaware of this amendment here, so we, I don't believe we've expressed such an opinion on this. As I understand it, you want to keep several of these lots or three of the lots the same?
Yeah, 356 would remain RLB and not C1 as requested, and the other lots would go from R3 to RLB and not C1 as requested. That was a discussion we had at the public hearing, and it was agreed at the, to go with, well, it was discussed, that was the Planning Commission recommendation also.
So your amendment would be to carve out two of them and essentially deny two, two lots?
Correct.
Mr. Carley, we're, we're essentially accepting the Planning Commission's recommendation. The Planning Commission's recommended it this way, and that's what we're.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that. I'm just, the text of your, your ordinance doesn't, it doesn't reflect what they're saying, so. My suggestion would be if you're gonna oppose the amendment, vote on the amendment separately and then change your ordinance accordingly. Let we have two readings for the change of your ordinance. For the affected lots.
Okay. Can we make the amendment now?
Yeah, I think what you were doing essentially is you're not changing two lots, you'll be changing them with three, that, is that?
We're changing all the West Fifth Street properties from R3 to RLB, and we're not doing anything to the West Sixth Street property. That would remain as is.
Okay, the lots, yeah, okay.
Six lots will change from requested C1 to RLB.
Yeah, and that constitutes two readings for that, and then the remaining ones.
Stays the same.
Stays the same, so, so.
Can we get someone from zoning down here or either table it?
Mr. Witherspoon, I don't think we need to table it. We can act on it today because we know what we want, and it's recommended in the Planning Commission's letter, and we know the applicant was okay with the change. Otherwise, we delay another month before we read on.
Well, then we need to repeat it again very subtly because I want to make sure what I'm voting on.
I think Mr. Brennan wrote up something, if he could read it for the good of the order.
Yeah, well, the amendment is to, the West Sixth Street property would remain as is, no change, and 333, 337, 341, 345, 349, 355, West Fifth Street would change from R3 currently to RLB.
Okay, Rose, can you read that suggested change?
Okay. Amending the official ordinance known as zoning ordinance of the city of Erie by changing the classification of the property at 356 West Sixth Street would remain RLB and not C1 as requested. The properties at 333, 337, 341, 345, 349, 355, West Sixth Street would change from R3 High Residential, Density Residential, to that of RLB Residential Limited Business and not C1 as requested.
Correct.
Mr. Brennan, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Carley, we need to vote on?
Amendment.
I'll second. I'll second the amendment.
Okay, moved by, I would say, Mr. Brennan, and seconded by Councilwoman Roque Hall.
Okay. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Harancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
Vote on the ordinance as amended?
Yeah, just vote on it as amended. 353, 356 stays the same, so it's just as if it's a denial, and you've got two readings on 333, 337, 41, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes. Correct.
So, Rose, we have to vote on the ordinance?
We need to vote on the?
Okay. Do you want me to say it again?
Ordinance as amended.
Okay.
Ordinance as amended.
Okay. Voting on the amendment, or the ordinance as amended, then. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Harancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.
Okay, thank you very much.
One more ordinance for first reading, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $13,500 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Contre-bouches is from the Mercy Terrace Apartments for the purchase of police equipment, fire prevention supplies, or equipment and window maintenance equipment. Introduced by Mr. Winarski and seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, the council file ordinance 515865, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. by city council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Haran Kunso.
One moment, please.
Ms. Roby, if I could just abstain from this item, I am employed at Mercy Terrace Apartments, although this is a donation to the city.
Okay.
I will abstain anyway.
Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. Next, we have resolutions. Mr. President?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion to move the balance of the agenda?
It moves.
I'll second that motion.
Any separations?
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I could separate number three under new business, number four under new business, and I think we would like to table number five under new business.
Four, table.
If you would look at number five, Mr. President, if that was your recommendation.
Yes, we will table five.
Okay, thank you.
Any other separations? You're in, Rose?
That the city solicitor is hereby authorized under direct to prepare an amendment to the codified ordinances of the city of Erie, Part One Administrative Code, Title III, Article one twelve, Rules of Council, Section one twelve point ten, Order of Business, by moving Citizens to Be Heard, Letter D, to Letter H, and Committee Reports of Council to Letter I, and adjournment to new Letter J. Letter D will be titled as Citizens to Be Heard Regarding Agenda Items Only. Mr. Brennan?
Ms. Roby, we've got a comment on this one to separate.
Oh, okay.
Mr. President, if I could, comment on this item.
Yes.
I have some concerns about this item in that I think when people come to a council meeting, oftentimes, they don't know what their- what the rules are for them as citizens to speak to us. They just come because they need someplace to air their issue, or they have a concern, they have a problem, and they don't really know what the rules are. And I'm somewhat hesitant to impose rules on people who come to us because they need us, or because they have a suggestion, or they have an issue that they need the city to address. And we've had people who've come here who've had problems with, you know, either a neighbor who has code issues on the property and isn't taking care of it, or we've had people who've come here with sewer backups for years and years. We had problems with the flooding. And we've had some significant need for citizens to come and tell us about a problem that we can help with. And I think we seem a little less welcoming if we say, if you're not going to talk about stuff on our agenda, which you don't know about until you walk in and pick one up. Unless we had such great news coverage that all twenty-five items have been discussed in the press, you may not know what's on the agenda, so therefore, you wouldn't know that you were coming to speak on an agenda item or not. So I'm not comfortable changing the meeting to make people who are not here to speak on an agenda item to speak at the end. I think we should give the opportunity to speak. We only meet twice a month, and citizens to be heard is for the purpose of the citizens to tell us their concerns. So for that reason, I would not be supporting this item. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yes, this is nothing new. This has been tried before at city council many, many, many years ago and was thrown out the window. I agree with Mrs. Kunso on this. As a member of the school board, we had many of the same problems that we're experiencing where people are not keeping on task to city business. And I think there's better ways of handling the citizens to be heard. I think it needs to be explained that this is about city business, not county business, and that they need to stay on track, and if they obey the rules, I don't see any problem. We solve that problem with the school district. If need be, if it becomes that the cameras are the issue, we can turn the cameras off or turn the sound down if it becomes a circus. Most of the people who come here come here with good reasons. And when I was not an elected official, it was tough enough to get down here. Not knowing when the end of the meeting is going to be puts a further burden on people. And you take a day like today with the snow, we don't really want to hold people up here, especially the elderly, that may have concerns. So I think there's a better way of solving this problem, and I'll be the first one to say that, you know, if they don't stay on task, if it's not concerning the city, then let's rule them out of order and set them down. You know, this is about city business, and everybody should have the right to address
Thank you. Any other discussion on it? Well, I agree with you in one point, Kaz, that we're about city business, and that's why I want to take care of city business first and foremost, and then everything else comes after that. But we voted up, we voted down, and we'll move forward. Rose?
Okay, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Haran Kunso.
No.
Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski.
No.
Mr. Mersky.
No.
Okay, next, we have a resolution by Mr. Mersky and seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, that the city solicitor has respectfully requested to research the feasibility of requiring all landlords registered with the city of Erie Code Enforcement Office to be current with all taxes and fees levied by the city to be eligible for a rental license and report his findings thereon. Back to council.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The reason I put this on the agenda, it's been well documented in the media that we're going- that we're working on the garbage issue. And I really felt like this is a good first step to get the ball rolling and to let people know that we are cooperating with the administration on this. And one of the things that I would hate to do is spend three, four, five caucus sessions or committee meetings talking about something that is illegal. And so by asking the solicitor to research it first, it gives us an opportunity to come in informed and make the best decision possible for the citizens.
Mr. President, if I could, I did want to say that I support, certainly support this resolution. I did want to just alert the audience and the council that we will be discussing this and other ideas, potential solutions to the issues of the refuse to delinquency. We'll begin that discussion today at our finance committee, so this is just the beginning, kind of a jumping off point of something that we want researched. All of the items that we'll be looking at as feasible alternatives will be reviewed, obviously, by Solicitor's Office to make sure that they're in compliance with the state laws and the ordinances. So do appreciate this starting point and continue this discussion today, starting after our meeting at our finance committee. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jones?
And also in relation to this resolution, I think it's important that we recognize this is not a etched in stone. We are asking the Solicitor's Office to do some due diligence on the legality of this option. And although it may come back to be a legitimate and viable legal option, we want to make sure that people understand that we are also very concerned about the tenants in relation to this ordinance and the possibility of putting limitations on landlords that can ultimately hurt or be negative towards the residents or the tenants of their properties. So as we're moving forward, it may be lawful but not expedient for the overall goal that we have of creating a space in our community for everyone to live in the best environment possible. But it's another option for us to look at, and I think all things are on the table. But it's important that we do recognize this is not to, in any way, to the detriment of the citizen who's renting, which they are very much on our minds as we're looking forward to checking this option out. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further discussion? Rose?
Okay, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.
I think that takes us to.
Committee reports? Okay. We'll start with Mr. Mersky.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to go over a couple of things in response to some of the things that were said today. You know, if only it were so simple to just boot someone's car if they didn't pay their garbage bill, we would have done that by now. As a third-class city, we are limited by what we're able to do by state law. And so oftentimes, New York State, they did change their laws so that with certain things, you know, they're allowed to take away your driver's license for unrelated to vehicle code issues. We do not have that in Pennsylvania. And so I would encourage, if you want, if that's what people want, they have to contact their state reps and their state senator to change those kind of laws. Those don't come from the city. I'm the liaison to the Convention Center Authority, and I know there's been a lot of talk with the bond issue that the county's going to guarantee. What I wanted to explain to people is how the authority works. The authority are eleven members. Seven members are picked by county council, not city council. County council, each county council member gets to pick somebody. The governor picks two, and I believe, I believe it's two that, as the host municipality, the city of Erie gets to pick through the mayor's office and affirmed by us. So two out of eleven are from the city. The rest are appointed by the governor and the county. So while I understand people coming to this body to air their grievances with that authority, the power for that authority and the weight of that authority really is contained in county government, not city government, and I wanted to explain that to everyone. Not that we're not doing anything about it, but it's really not at this level of municipal government. It's at the next level is where that's handled. And you're always welcome to call the authority directly and talk to their members directly. They are appointed by elected officials, and they represent you. So I encourage you to, you know, if you have issues with them, call the Convention Center Authority and let them know how you feel about those types of issues. I do go to the meetings regularly, and I'm there as a voice for the citizens. I don't have a vote, but I have a voice. So I do air your- air the concerns of the citizens at those meetings. But again, eleven members, seven picked by the county council, two by the governor, and two by the mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of items here. Just a quick update on my committee reporting to the Erie Zoo. The Erie Zoo's next project is currently on for bidding. It's a renovation to the line exhibit. The bids are due next Thursday. Construction is anticipated to start in April. Construction would occur this summer, and the exhibit would reopen next summer. I attended the annual Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Leadership Breakfast and Career Fair. Again, a great event and resource for our community. The event was hosted by the Urban Erie Community Development Corporation and a number of other local organizations at the JFK Center. About three hundred people attended, you know, very exciting event with a lot of people getting a lot of good information at the event. There were organizations represented, a variety of industries, including construction industries, healthcare, business, manufacturing, and hopefully, people made a lot of connections, and hopefully, we get a lot of people and some jobs at that event. There's an upcoming meeting that is supported by the- sponsored by the Mothers Against Teen Violence, Sonia Arrington. It's called the Community Call to Action Meeting. It's next Wednesday, February twelfth, at the MLK Center from six to eight. This meeting is a continuation of a meeting that I attended back at, in January, at the Booker T Washington Center to discuss the fighting violence in our city, and everyone is definitely welcome to attend. And lastly, just as everyone is, some people had talked here about the delinquent refuse bills. Of course, we need to review the solutions, which we're going to do today. I've received many emails and had many discussions with a lot of people with some great ideas. Again, we need to really focus and get to the what'll work legally and be most effective, and we really need to take action as soon as possible to get a handle on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Winarski.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning, everyone. Follow up with Dave. We did our finance meeting coming up here after this council meeting. Naturally, our main topic is going to be these garbage fees and delinquents. I appreciate Bob bringing that resolution forward to council just to sort of give us a kickstart. There's been many, many options and alternatives that have been bandied around a little bit where we'll use our solicitor more often than we can imagine to see what is the legalities of some of these. Which one we're going to come up with, who knows? If there's anything we can possibly do, I believe there's something we can actually do and we will do. It just may, it's not a quick fix. It's going to take a little bit of time, but I guarantee as a council, we will foresee this pretty quickly. Didn't get to meet with John Haran. I did get to talk to him. We had a, there was a housing authority meeting. Mr. Witherspoon filled in for me, I recall. Thank you. It does conflict with my work hours, but I did talk to Mr. Haran, and he informed me that he would keep me up to date if there was any issues that I should possibly be at this meeting for, or he'll fill me in via the phone or email. He hasn't been there for as long as he has because he hasn't been doing a good job. We appreciate the job he is doing. He does have goals every year, expectations every year, and just from what we see going on out there, he has been doing a pretty good job, so I appreciate his efforts there. I didn't make it to the EMTA monthly meeting. Other than Phase One of their forty-million-dollar expansion is moving forward, even with the weather the way it's been. Lot of infrastructure. Mike Tan, who's the acting director right now, has had a open-door or transparency-type policy going on. So, I mean, there's a lot of good things happening down there. It's something that, I don't know if anybody's been in the Fourteenth Street Parade in French Street area, but they are moving forward. They plan on keeping up us updated. They're offered to come to council at any time if we want any updates, and we will take them up on that. Other than that, that's it for me. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was not able to attend the water authority meeting as it does conflict with my work schedule with a lot of the meetings that I have, but I am kept up via minutes. And as Mr. Winarski said, any major issues, I do get a call or email from the director, and we get those things worked out, and I can report them out. I was able to attend the airport authority meeting two weeks ago. It was a very quick, early first-of-the-year meeting, but there was just, it was good reports on efforts to expand and increase the number of flights and the size of flights that are happening. A lot of behind-the-scenes legwork that has not been made public yet, and some has. So the airport authority is doing a good job in trying to maximize the expansion of the runway to have economic benefit and convenience and travel benefit for our citizens in and out of the city of Erie in this region. Also, appreciate, Mr. President, for allowing me to bring the Do the Jingle team down from Community Country Day School. Again, it's an opportunity to showcase some of our young people and some of the things that they're doing and how people are mentoring and working with them. And what they didn't tell you is that not only do they do cute little jingles and beats, but they're working on music theory and a deeper level of musicianship with these young people at that school. And so it's very exciting what they're doing. So we ask to those in the city that see this or saw that or hear about this competition, it is not about just that group of kids, although if it was, it would be worthy of voting for it. But it does allow us to get the city of Erie on the map in a positive way. So anything we can do to support that by voting, that would be great. DoTheJingle.com is the way you do that. Also, I had an opportunity to participate and to experience some recreational opportunities in the city. I didn't know, well, I'd heard about it, but I had not yet attended an Erie Hurricanes basketball game, and I did that this past Sunday. And I did that this past Sunday. And the owner is out of New York State, but owns the team here in the city of Erie. And there are a lot of local players who are being showcased and they're traveling around the country. It's not, it's like a level below, I hate to say below, but like a level removed from like the D-League, NBA D-League basketball. But there are some amazing athletes locally, as well as from around the country, that are participating in those games. And so I just want to just, you know, if you're interested in good basketball, something fun to do with the family, you can look, get online, I'm sure, Erie Hurricanes and most of their games that are on Sunday afternoons. And again, it was just a fun outing for myself and my family to participate in. On Monday, I had the privilege of getting on the court myself with the Washington Wizards and got dunked on a few times or something, I don't know. But it was a fundraising opportunity for the Erie School District and their sporting program, their athletic programs. And so this is Public Schools Week, and so they have a series of programs that are going on. So let's support our city schools and all of our schools and all of our institutions of learning. Let's find ways to support them throughout our area to support our children. Because we, as we know and believe, and we always give the speech to kids, education is extremely important and it's a holistic education that is the best, including academics, athletics, et cetera, extracurricular activities. Also, last Saturday was the Game for Peace, which is a game Strong Vincent High School played against Erie East High School at the Gannon Auditorium. Eight-thirty, there were approximately thirteen supporters and sponsors of that program. And it was a means to get the message out. It's one of the biggest city games of the year as far as attendance for basketball, high school basketball. And we were able to use that forum and that medium to get the message of peace and community unity and oneness out into the community as a whole. And so that was a wonderful event, successful event. City council was a supporter of that, as well as the mayor's office, the county executive, and so many other organizations and groups and individuals throughout the city were a part of that. Also, I did attend the Economic Development Corporation dinner a couple of weeks ago, and it was great to hear a lot of the successes and the wins that are happening in our community that we don't often hear about, both economically, small business, entrepreneurially. There are some good things going on in our community. And so I just want to thank John Elliott and that organization for what they did and what they do and for showcasing and highlighting a lot of the positives. And finally, I'm being followed around by a young man today who's in our audience. He's a, his name is Adam Borland. He's a senior at Gerard High School, but his family and my family, he's grown up with my children. So he's my other eighteen-year-old son. But he's here doing a job shadowing and career shadowing day. So he's going to spend the day with me and get some of this meeting. He'll go with me to my other job and get a little bit of that experience as well. So Adam, appreciate you being here and I hope you learned something, something positive. So thank you, Mr. President. That's my report.
Thank you very much. Councilman Kotowski?
Yes, Mr. President. We attended the O&amp;E Pension Board meeting and things are progressing well there. We had a good past month. I won't speak for the future month coming up, but it was, everything is progressing well. We attended the Neighborhood Watch Meeting of South Hills with Councilman Mursky, as we always stay active on that one. And we also tended the CLOG meeting for new members of council. And that was a very helpful meeting and got to meet a lot of old friends there. And on a last note, because many of my committees will be next, coming up this month, so I'll have more reports. But in reference to Councilman Mursky, a lot of people misunderstood around the community what's happening here. And I think this is the necessary first step for those of us who have to deal with landlords, and we're not blaming them only, but when you look at this list and you got people that are basically scofflaws, in my opinion, and not, you know, not doing what's proper, paying their taxes and blaming the tenants, that's unacceptable. So we have to start taking some tools to not only that affect the tenants and, what do you call it, their responsibilities, but also the landlords. Many of them, who unlike when I was a young man, do not live in the houses or live in the community any longer. They're large corporations or people that live outside the city in well-aided suburbia and don't really care much about what goes on in their buildings. And this has to stop. And so that's why I was glad to support Councilman Mursky on that.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman and so?
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that Mr. Brennan mentioned the Violence Awareness Meeting on February the 12th that Ms. Arrington is holding. I was hoping to attend myself, but I do have a doctor appointment for my son out of town that day, so I won't be in attendance. I know Mr. Brennan will be able to represent us and bring us a report. Appreciate the efforts that Ms. Arrington is doing to try to curb violence in our city. After this meeting, we'll have our finance committee. We do have a lengthy agenda with lots of ideas for the refused delinquencies. And then today's also my last meeting as the chairperson of the Erie Area Council of Governments. I continue to serve as a delegate on there, but this is my last meeting as the chairwoman, hopefully. Hopefully, two years. Also, the redevelopment authority meets on Monday. We'll be touching base with Kim Green to talk with her about the works of the authority and anything that council should be informed about. And also, I just wanted to mention that on our agenda, we had the appointments come and go on our agenda. And one of our agenda items was an appointment to the zoning hearing board. And, you know, one of the things that I think it's important for us to note is that when we ask you to serve on boards and authorities, you are a volunteer and we want to make sure that we acknowledge how much we appreciate your service to the city. And I know Richard Wagner has served on there for the last four-year term and he really worked hard and put a lot of effort into that board. And I just want to make sure I acknowledge his work for the city and appreciate his service. So I thank him, and I know we have a new appointment on there and I'm sure that will, that individual will do a good job as well. But I just want to make sure we don't forget to thank those who served before. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll just lead in with the appointment of Mr. John Drew, retired teacher, very active in our community, and John would do an excellent job. Also, the Erie Housing Authority is in the process with their legal parties to figure out a way how to collect the monies on their Section Eight landlords. They're doing some legal research at this time and they will be getting back to us and they will be doing something. He does not, he being John Aran, does not want that mark on the housing authority. And knowing John for as long as I have, it will get done. That's all I have. You all there?
I have just a couple of things. I did attend the fire pension meeting, that was the other day. But they didn't really have a value on the accounts because there was a problem with the disc that PNC sent. Nobody could open it, but we're going to get that taken care of and get a new disc and get some accurate information. And there is an aggregate pension board coming up, meeting will be coming up next Tuesday. It'll be our last meeting with Merrill Lynch as our consultant, who's been our consultant for years. And DeHav, which is our new consultant, will be at that meeting also. And we look forward to working with them and hope that we have many, many years with them that we had with Merrill Lynch. So that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you very much. Administration?
In these harsh conditions that we've had the past month, I would just like to say a special thank you to our Erie firefighters who work very diligently. We've had several devastating fires that have affected our community. If anybody needs a smoke detector, please contact Fire Administration at eight-seven-zero-one-four-zero-zero. We have grant monies. We have smoke detectors available to residents of the city of Erie at no charge. So please call. There's no excuse why anybody in the city does not have a smoke detector that's operating in their home. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned.